All right, I'll call the meeting to order. You can jump right in with our first discussion item. So it's item 2.1 Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Discussion. Dr. B?
Chairperson Taylor, members of the board, Chancellor Nassi, colleagues and guests, it's my pleasure today to give an update on various important budget parameters and projections, and then, more importantly, to foster discussion with the board, give you an opportunity to give feedback to us about some of the key board-based parameters in the lead into the fiscal year 26 budget, the formal presentation and adoption process. So with that, let's get started. Just to do a quick overview of what we're going to be talking about today, we're going to start with talking about anticipated revenues, move into the conversation about federal, that's even worse, federal uncertainty, and then, the reason I have that sort of in between the revenues and expenditures is the federal uncertainty, the different things that are going on with the federal government are going to have potential impacts both on the revenue side and the expense side, so I sandwiched them in the middle, so we'll talk about them in the middle, and then talking about projected expenditures and some of the priorities that we have looking forward. Just, some of this information is just for your information. Can we, do I need to have it closer to my mouth or further away from my mouth to get it to not?
Dr. B., I agree you pointed not toward this wall, it doesn't mean that we need to move it like more down.
Okay. Is that better? It's better for me, anyway. All right. All right. So some of this information is just sort of contextual to give you an idea of the size, some of the highlighting items, the stuff that we're typically talking about as we've discussed with the board before are the things that are in color here. The fund balance, grants and contracts, those are largely passed through, or the fund balance is being used for, specifically for capital projects that are sort of predetermined or part of the capital process. So when we're talking about the operating budget, we're talking about the colored, more the colored sections of the pie. Just to give, remind you also with this, what we showed here this last year is we showed what the prior year, what the approved increases were for property taxes. So we increased the 2% this last year, and that generated $2.8 million. That's that little piece right there. And then the tuition increase last year was $1, and that was that also very small piece of pie. The idea with that is to show that when we're talking about the increases in terms of what the total is, it's actually a very small proportion of the total. And then, Chancellor, we were talking about the levy limit, and then numbers, you saw that my eyes were like, they weren't matching. It's because of the, it's the combination of the 138 plus the 2.8 is what the number, what is the starting number that we looked at. So, yes, I figured that out right after you left the office. Okay. Again, this is to sort of summarize what the revenue picture is. What I highlighted here is the information that's in blue are things that we're not necessarily proposing. They're just for context. In fact, they're, what we're trying to do is build a budget that is predicated on no tuition increase and no property tax increase. So that is that the property taxes would be levy neutral. That means that we're just getting additional revenue from growth in new property. Okay, so there is good news and bad news today that I'm going to bring up versus our last conversations related to that. The good news is growth in Pima County has been bigger than, we're typically conservative about how we project it. The growth was bigger than what we were estimating earlier. The earlier conversations were all based on a levy neutral being about $2 million. So the good news is that's about $800,000 more than we anticipated having in property taxes. Again, that's without the board doing anything, that's just growth in new properties. The updated other information, I think the other information's pretty consistent or similar to what we have talked about already with the board, with the state, that the state is actually looking at a positive revenue surplus right now, which is normally good news. It would mean that it's more promising that some of the proposals that the community colleges or that we put forward would be more likely to be funded. I'm going to put a big conditional caveat and asterisk with that, which is that some of the folks up in Phoenix are also nervous about the federal uncertainty. So while they, I think, a month plus ago would have been thinking about what they could do with that surplus revenue, now I think that they're going to be a bit more cautious about over, overcommitting when they may be absorbing expenses that previously were covered by the federal government. So that's something to keep in mind. So right now, with the normal projections we're talking about, is that we're not expecting any significant change to STEM funding, and it's unlikely to get operating aid. The one proposal that we have that I think has a chance is dual enrollment funding. So they have done it in a one-time basis in the past, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. So I talked a little bit about the state appropriation situation. The proposal for dual enrollment, it would provide support for the college to provide the dual enrollment that we already do. That would be a really good situation. We currently provide it at no cost to students or to the colleges, or I mean, to the K-12 districts. The college absorbs a lot of costs related to that in the neighborhood of direct costs or not, around a million dollars. And then there are a bunch of indirect costs related to administrative support, other things the college does to support dual enrollment. That's something we've been doing for years, just absorbing those costs. It's a really good program. It's something we want to be able to continue to do, but with our challenges financially, it becomes something where it's like, okay, can we figure out how to do it? So the recommendation right now on how we're approaching the budget is because we have the proposal at the state, because the state seems to be recognizing that they want to provide support for dual enrollment. I will point out that is a big change from 15 years ago. I'll just make that clear, that the state is actually recognizing the value of dual enrollment now. Because there is, I think, some promise, the idea of talking with the K-12 districts, I think right now, let's see if we get state funding from, for dual enrollment this year. If they don't, then I think next year, we've got to really look as an alternate revenue source from those K-12 districts and look at a better cost sharing. But that right now is sort of a wait and see, and see what happens with the state, and really push hard to get that kind of funding from the state. We also, as I mentioned, we're not planning on any tuition increase. March would be when we propose it, so this upcoming meeting, so we're not planning to take a tuition increase at all, but that we're going to continue to have those conversations and think really seriously about, okay, looking forward, what are the proposals, or what are the things that we want to look at? Again, looking at dual enrollment, looking at differential tuition, increasing the way the differential tuition is, and looking at how it's structured, I think are things that we should have conversations with the board over the course of the next year. And that at this point, the recommendation again is to not have a tuition increase. Okay, let's talk a little bit about federal uncertainty. I know we've been providing you information about this, and Chancellor, if you want, you can chime in as we're going through, since you've actually been in Washington, and you all have been in Washington and have heard more direct things, but I'm going to, let me go through some of the more obvious things that we're going to be looking at that are potentially going to impact or will impact the budget. So student financial aid seems to be something that, at least in a direct way, is probably relatively safe. Lots of conditional language there. It is far and away the most significant source of federal uncertainty risk that we have. Think about, about $30 to $40 million of funding that helps students pay for tuition goes, comes through either the Pell Grant program, it's primarily the Pell Grant program, but also some loan-based programs as well. So from a size standpoint, that's the biggest risk. It does not appear that financial aid support will go away, at least in the near term. I think what we've heard is that it's probably more likely to have conditional qualities to it, that you have to provide assurance that the college doesn't do any X, Y, or Z in order to continue to get Title IV funding. That's what I have heard, I think that that was also what you guys were hearing when you were in Washington as well. I have these split out in terms of grant programs. Ongoing programs are things that are things the college has had ongoing grant support for, ongoing programs for years and years and years and years. These are, the most notable of these are adult education programs, which I think, some of which are at risk with how the federal government is approaching things. Probably not exclusively, though. I mean, I think that it's, it kind of is a mixed bag. And then trio programs. For some context of, some of the trio programs, Upward Bound is probably the most familiar one that you would, you would have heard of, but we have a number of different trio-based programs. You're talking about between adult education and trio, annual financial support from the Fed is $4 or $5 million. Now, those programs directly support things, so if we don't get funding for those, then we would be figuring out, we either have to find another revenue source to support those things or those programs go away. Similarly, one-time projects and programs, those are things that are more specific to particular grants, Title V grants, where we go like hospitality, where it has some amount of program development and some amount of construction to refurbish and improve the facilities that are teaching those programs. So that's a competitively-based project. You put this, you submit the grant for those kinds of things. There's an online one that's a bigger risk, actually, because it's got more years to come. So one-year projects and programs, they kind of vary in risk because it depends on, is it the tail end of the grant? Is it right at the beginning of the grant? How big it is? What, you know, are you in the middle of construction of something where the funding in future years goes away that would be supporting the construction, those kinds of things? So there is significant risk there, but it ranges between the different programs. The one that is, I think, most notable and is also one that was at risk even before what was happening with the current administration, which is the childcare, which is the C-Campus Grant. It was at the, it's at the end of its cycle. It's, it provides about $400,000 a year to support. It supports, it's important support, but it's for a fairly small population that it supports, so about 78 students have been served over three years, and the cost of that, if we were to keep that program going, the federal government supports about $400,000 for that program. So if you wanted to keep it whole, that's $400,000 that we don't have planned for at this point. The next one down is indirect cost recovery. So when you have grants, grants have different allowances in terms of the amount of indirect costs. This has got a fair amount of attention because the, for example, the NIH recently came out and indicated that their grants were going forward, only going to provide 15% IDC. That is, by the way, I'll just put as a parenthetical, probably devastating to any research university. Like, they are reliant on IDC support to do supplemental things that they do to keep those grants and make those grants viable, but also they use indirect costs to buy equipment that the grant might not fund. So our neighbors down the street, this is a huge issue for them. For us, it's an issue. For them, it's a huge issue. So for us, we currently rely on about $1 million of indirect cost recovery in terms of we commit and have expenses tied to about $1 million. Those are for people who work in the grants office and people, there's, I think, a position in, in the financial services area that we, because they're dedicated to providing the necessary business support for grants, they're funded with IDC, and that's something that we did as a budget-related decision a number of years ago. So if you think about if indirect cost recovery drops below a certain level, now we have to either find ways to have the support, go into the general fund, or cut down what we're doing. So those are, again, it's about $1 million. The, right now, our indirect costs on an annual basis is in the neighborhood of $4 to $5 million. So we have a fair amount of cushion before we get into desperate mode, but then again, that indirect cost recovery really helps support the general operations at the college in general ways. We just don't budget for it, if that makes sense. Okay. And lastly, and I alluded to this from the financial bullet that I'm talking about, is at the state, there are folks at the state who are fiscally cautious, trying to not use politically charged terms, but they're, they're, bless you, cautious in how they approach the budget and are very diligent. That's a very high priority for how they approach their jobs. And in those cases, those, some of those folks are starting to get really nervous, that they're worried that the federal government stops supporting things and then it becomes the state's burden. So then they're risk averse, or they're trying to like, okay, we don't want to, you know, commit to any additional funding, we might need to actually cut back on funding because we don't know what might be coming from the feds. So that's the financial side. The political side is more of a, probably a programmatic impact, but something to be aware of, that our, our state has, you know, it's, it's probably leans a little bit red coming out of Phoenix in terms of programmatic-type proposals, but when things that are often approved tend to be sort of moderated through the process. I think that there's starting to be some signs that what is going on in the federal government is creating an emboldened-type approach from the more conservative folks up in Phoenix. So that's something that we're also going to have to watch, not only what dictives might come out of the federal government that have a programmatic impact, but the state might also find themselves proposing some of those kinds of things as well. Now, we have some other checks and balances in the state, and I don't think I want to overly alarm you, but I want to say, these are things we're going to have to watch for things both financial, that are obvious financial, but then things that could also impact programmatic could also come out of the state as well. Okay. Let's move into talking about expenses. Again, if you all stop me at any point, if you want to get into any conversation, if you have questions. But again, as I've talked about with the board, from an operating standpoint, the large majority of our expenses are in personnel. That is totally normal for colleges and universities. It's a very personnel-heavy operation, that when you're looking at the costs, the cost increases that happen, there are things that what we try to do with the budget, is we fold in, doing the normal, like, doing the same things we do this year, next year, and then trying to find ways to do, improve and do things better. But there's no built-in inflation, other than for certain contractual obligations that we have. We don't turn around and say, oh, your travel budget gets increased by 5% because inflation is 5%, or operating expenses. Everything is held flat, and, and that you have to make a proposal to have an increase of any type, and then those go through the sort of strategic review, does that fit in with the strategic priorities? And really, they're kept to a very small minimum of any increase. It's like, the plan is, we're just going to do what we're doing. We're funding on a budgetary basis what we do in a current year, with the priorities being that recognizing the great work that our employees do, so that's providing compensation increases, I'll get into some of the detail in that, in a second, and then handling the contractual obligations that we have to absorb. So we have additional costs coming in from the city of Tucson with our deal with adult education. Some of the expectations in terms of who's responsible for doing what at the different facilities is changing, and that's going to cost a little bit more for us. We have additional IT licenses have inflators built into them, so those tend to go up. We have utilities increases. All of those, I would, I, on a normal year, you're talking about a million to a million and a half. I have in here, we have planned for a million and a half. I think there's probably room that we can cut that back, like, be really judicious, pull that back and get that down to more like an increase of $1 million, but anything more than that is really unrealistic because there's like, these are just doing the things we're normally doing. Increases on the IT side also are really important. There are a handful of important system improvements, budgeting software, for example, where the way that we have been doing the budget for years is far, it's inefficient, it's based on Excel-based spreadsheets and things like that. It's, we have a, we're implementing a new system that is actually going to enable us to have much better budget management going out all the way to the end users, to all of the departments, and it will improve the college's ability to do budgeting going forward. So that's an important, but it, it comes at a, not a huge cost increase, but a cost increase to the college. So there's another one that's on the student side that's actually going to enhance the college's ability to flag out students who are struggling. We actually think with that one, it's a worthwhile investment that while the budget needs to fold the cost in, that in the end, it's probably going to result in, and even if it's a moderate, modest improvement in retention-type measures, it will pay for itself. So those are the kinds of things that when we're talking about increasing and adding new systems, there, we're either in desperate need of a better system from what we currently have, or there's a return on investment of the system where it actually looks like it will pay off in the long run. Okay. The last piece that I want to mention in this, oh, I, sorry, I'm like talking off a slide that I'm not even showing you. The, so with, to get into some of the detail, with the salaries and wages, so on a given year, what we're talking about is with the class comp structure that we implemented a few years ago, is to start with the basis of each person gets a year of experience, so that's recognizing that they're now more experienced and they're, they should be moving up compared to the market. It's a market-based compensation structure. So it's a year of experience. Then, now that it's been a couple, a few years now since we implemented, it's becoming really clear that there are a handful of areas where we're probably out of line with market, and so we've done some analysis, and coming out of HR, the recommendation is to make some changes to some of the scales. Specifically, the staff scales, on the very low end are out of line, and this is one of the reasons why I think we're having a hard time hiring some of our folks in maintenance, in the facilities area. As minimum wage increased, there's then an effect where jobs that are above minimum wage also start having a pressure, and then those jobs then start moving up in pay. We, I think, started in a good place a couple of years ago, but I think we're finding ourselves out of whack, so the recommendation is actually to bump those lowest levels, so grades one through four, move those up about 8% each, and that's the market data supports that. We're going to be talking with AERC. I've mentioned to them in general about this already, I've had a conversation with AERC, talked about what some of the priorities are, mentioned that the lowest-paid staff jobs, and then also in the faculty, there is a recommendation that we're going to be working with AERC to look at the faculty grades one through five and moving those up. That's again, based on the market comparisons that led to the class comp structure, updating those, looking at how have they changed elsewhere, and then, and then it supports the idea of increasing it. Okay, after doing that, then, the next step would be to do a minimum increase so that for anybody else who isn't getting an increase that's based on years of experience because they're above their point, or they're not in one of the adjustment ranges. I've had the conversation with AERC and mentioned that, don't expect that to be a high number because there's not much room. What we're looking at right now is something like a minimum increase of about 1%. So, and then if you add in an increase for adjunct faculty, because we always want to keep those wages to be appropriate and market-based versus where they can work elsewhere in the state in particular, recommendation to increase about 3% for that. If you put all of those things together, that's an increase of about 3.8 million. Now, I said there was good news and bad news. We've talked about some of the bad news. Here's one of the other pieces of bad news, which is we got the actuarial assessments from our benefits consultant, and after a number of years of having very moderate increases in our health coverage costs based on utilization and cost and anticipated cost increases for medical going forward, so it's a projection, like, it's based on what is actually happening at the college and what has happened recently, and then projecting out, okay, and we anticipate in the national medical world that the, the costs of pharmaceuticals will go up X percent, and the costs of healthcare will go up Y percent. The recommendation is for us to increase our contributions, that's the combination of the college's contributions and the employee contributions, contributions by $1.7 million. That's a big hit, that's bigger than normal. Again, we've had a couple of years where, a few years in a row where it's been really moderate increases, and I'll talk with you a little bit about a potential strategy for that, but that's, again, the contribution in total needs to, is recommended to go up by 1.7 million. One of our plans in particular is running where, if you look at the proportion of the expenses that are borne by the employees versus the total contributions, it's getting out of whack with the original design structure. We're going to be talking with the board about that when we make the proposals going forward, but I want to say it to you now in case you have some feedback on this. But my recommendation and what will, what will be looking at, and where there's a benefits working group, we're going to be talking to them about it as well, is making some moderate changes to that high-cost plan, and then making it so that there's a little bit, a little bit greater percentage is borne by the employees, and get that in a much healthy, in a healthier place. It's not, that is not solving the one, it's not, that's not going to be something that solves that 1.7, it's going to be a moderate increase, that's like $50,000. But it gets it where the cost share is a little bit healthier. You don't want to have one plan where the college is paying 90-plus percent of the costs, and then another plan where it's 40%, right? So it's balancing those things out, and it's, it's a pretty, pretty significant variance right now for one, one plan in particular. The other recommendation for how to handle that is because our, our increases over time and the actual utilization has been good since we went self-funded, is that we, the college has built up a reserve in the, so we've been putting more money into that than we actually needed to spend out for a number of years. So one of the recommendations, when you look at how things are added up, like the little pluses and minuses that I'm going to show you in a second, one of the recommendations is to actually spend down the reserve a little bit. And because it's been growing, it's specific to the purpose of the medical plan, so it's at a plate, at a point where it's sufficiently large that, where we can plan to spend it down, but not get reliant on it. Like, so that's a really important thing to understand, that if you have built up reserve of, say, $5 million, which is approximately what we're talking about, and then you turn around and you said, oh, let's just spend that all down next year. Well, then, the year after that, then all of a sudden, we have a massive budget hit. So the idea is you want to phase out, like, spend it down, do it, but do it in a really responsible way so that there's no, like, really big ugly that's going to happen a couple of years in the future. So that, the idea is like, just phase it in, use a little bit of it, get the, spend the reserve down a little bit, and then not have the burden hit our budget. Yes?
How are benefits elected at the college? Is that a committee that is put together that looks at the providers, or is it just the college going out like it would for any other vendor?
We, right. Okay, so it's self-funded, so what it is, so that, by self-fund, I mean, meaning that we hire a firm to manage it and to have a, have the agreements with the local medical providers. it and to have a, have the agreements with the local medical providers, like, so all of that. But that, what we're essentially doing is we're not paying an insurer, we're, we're on the hook for whatever the costs are. We have stop-loss insurance so that there's not a huge risk of us doing that and funding it ourselves. I'll get to your question in a sec. I know it's not exactly what you were asking. So then, when we went self-funded, we had these insurance plans that were based on sort of the standard-type plans that exist. There was, at the time, HMO, a PPO, and then there was another PPO that was sort of the beginnings of what became a high deductible plan. Over time, what we've looked at is, so that was based on what's like in the market, right? So whoever got the competitive bid for the fully insured plan, they said, "This is our, you know, these are our three plans that kind of mimic what you were asking for." And then those are the plans. When we went self-funded, we started with what those plans were like, right? Because you don't want to have massive disruption where all of a sudden people's plans are completely different one year to the next year, that they have similar choices. So what it is, is incrementally over time, things have changed. But what we have done is incrementally, things have changed quite a bit. So whereas there used to be a true HMO plan, a PPO plan, and then a buy-up PPO plan, now our plans are sort of an HMO, that's the expensive one that I was just referring to, a PPO plan, and then there's two versions of a high deductible plan. So it's totally different looking than it looked 15 years ago. And we've made those changes through talking with our benefits consultant, what's changing in the workplace, getting an idea around what do other employers provide, what's realistic to continue to provide, and then, and then allowing individuals, so this gets to the last question, I'm not sure if you were getting, how does an individual choose? So then you provide the options and then individuals choose. And the individuals can choose and we can modify how that happens over time by providing better, like incentives. So when we went to self and, self-funded, we incentivized some of the, like, right now the high deductible plan is subsidized more heavily than the other plans are, meaning that particularly for employees who get either at a spouse or at family. So the basic coverage for if it's just employee-only is somewhat similar. The amount that the college funds for families, for example, is a better incentive on the high deductible plans. So it, it incentivizes folks to move from one plan to another. So that's a very complicated answer to probably a simpler question, but that's basically how it works. So they're standard-type plans, though, and they're based on what is normal in the, in the, what is, based on some history of the college, right? Trying not to disrupt things too much, but modifying things over time. And then also modifying it for looking at the environment and going, "Hey, our deductible on our PPO plan is way lower than any other public employer in town, so it's probably time to change it." So it's also been changed like that, so that it mimics what some of the other public employers are in town. It tends to be on the better end of the spectrum. Our health plan is on average better than average compared to the public employers, but it's not the best in the area. That was a lot.
Thank you.
The, typically, we take that proposal to change the benefits. Again, the, the idea is not to change massively the benefits this year. The idea is to do moderate changes to the, really, the one that's out of whack in terms of cost contribution. Make that kind of a recommendation and then take that to the board. And then part of that would also be the idea that the board is also supporting that idea that spending down that reserve a little bit. That would be, likely it will go to you in the March meeting, so upcoming soon. So that would be one where if you have thoughts, you had some direction that you wanted to give us, or give us some feedback about what you want to see in that proposal, I'd be happy to make sure that that happens.
Any comments or questions so far? No. I have a, one that's just, it's kind of a process question, just because we've never quite been in this situation before. But if, if we imagine a scenario where we approve tuition and property tax to whatever we're going to approve it to be, and then some kind of worst-case scenario happens later this year where we get hit with a, you know, big cut federally, what options do we have at that point? Because we've already sort of set, do we just, is the option either we cut stuff or we tap into reserves, or is there an option to tweak some of those other things after the fact, or what, what does the array of options look like?
You totally lead in, perfect question. In fact, for the last, but the last item is actually getting at this point, which is with all of the uncertainty. One of the things the college can do is you do something like a tax increase, you do something like a tuition increase, and then not commit those funds to anything so that you kind of hold them in case of, you know, to create a contingency. With the amount of uncertainty right now, that's not an unwise thing to think about. The, when you, when you're setting a budget, you're not obligated to spend, it gives you the capacity to spend, if that makes sense. So you're never forced to spend what you put in your budget. You can always go lower than that, you can always make a change. You just can't turn around and go, "Whoa, the federal government just did this thing that we were hoping wasn't going to happen. We want to increase taxes." You can't do that till the next year. So it's something you kind of have to anticipate what the maximum amount that you want to do and then set that level, but it doesn't force you to spend it. In terms of if some of these uglies happen, there, you know, we were going through some of those, and I mentioned some numbers that were pretty big, some of those programs would not be supportable, right? There would have to be other cuts going on, there would have to be other ways to handle it, and quite honestly, some of those programs would not, we wouldn't be able to provide them. We don't have the resources to do that. So that would be, the other side of it is you're cutting and you're not doing as well. Okay.
I have a question, but I'm not sure if the question's for you or for chancellor. As we are preparing for the next fiscal year's budget, are we communicating this to faculty and staff? And if so, how? Because I'm assuming if, that we feel uncertainty, they feel it as well. Is that some, I mean, I know I get your emails, but is there anybody that is specifically reaching out and sharing some of the preliminary ideas?
Just what I've sent out, you know, to the college, and of course, we've shared with the board what we think some of the financial impact could be, right? Again, it's, it's like, how do you quantify this level of uncertainty? That's the challenge, I think, that's before us. So it's kind of, we're playing with ideas like, this is the nightmare scenario, this is maybe a little less of a nightmare, or, you know, none of the scenarios are good. So now with the, you know, as you saw, we have, you know, we, we have clear communication on what these grants and the federal sources are worth, but which one will be targeted? Which ones won't we have? That's something we really don't know. You know, as you know, right, you were there with us in DC when you're talking to lawmakers from both sides of the aisle, right? Someone that said, "No, these are great programs and we want to support them." And then the next day, you read in the paper, other things, and then you start to say, "Well, how do we understand this?" I think that's part of our challenge that we're working through now is, how do we quantify the various scenarios? And then running an exercise, what would it look like if Title V was gone? What would it look like if Title V and Trio was gone? What would it look like if we wanted to keep our childcare center moving and Title V? So we have to kind of play with all those. But to your point on communication, just what I've sent out broadly is kind of what's out there. But of course, each of the leaders has, you know, that's on this team, have access to the sheets that you have had access to in terms of the actual numbers.
I think you, I ask because I'm assuming that if, if we have uncertainty and we have probably a little bit more information, or quicker access to that information, I would imagine that the rest of the community at Pima Community College has questions as well. But as you said, if leadership is communicating, then that's good, that's one I want to know.
In addition to what Jeff just was talking about, there's, there are some additional conversations. Like I said, I've met with AERC and, I'm supposed to not use acronyms, but I'm like, not sure I'm going to even get that one right. So, the employee group.
All-Employed Resource Council.
There you go. Thank you. And then Staff Council, because I'm normally with that group, so, and then I have scheduled time to talk with Faculty Senate in the future. That doesn't mean that they haven't also had those conversations. I'm telling, I'm, I've been to a couple of the groups already and had some of the conversations about federal uncertainty in particular.
Dave, can you expand on the loss 1.5 in the investment earnings? I know that's on a couple of your slides.
Yeah, and this is one that we have talked with the board about, which is that, as you know, our reserve balances have been spending, we've been spending it down, right? As we've done the, the health professions expansion, essentially funding it out of cash reserves. We have less money to invest. On top of it, interest rates have dropped a little bit from their peak point, which means that are the interest rates that we're getting on our investments is going down a little bit. So the adjustment is basically based on those two things. We have less money that's being invested and the interest rates are a little bit lower. It's a very simple, sort of simple, somewhat simple calculation. That means that we can expect we'll have less money coming in from our investments. It's not because of any risky investments or anything like that. It's really, we have very secure bond-based investments. We're not allowed to invest in securities or anything like that. So it's purely a function of the fact that we have less money to invest and the interest rates are a little bit lower. And it's an unfortunate time that it's happening, but it is predictable.
Yeah. On that slide that you have up, the net budget impact, in the strategy section there, I, the question that was pinging in my head as we were going through was the discussion we had a year ago, or whatever it was, about trying to find expense-side savings through eliminating vacant positions as people were leaving. I assume that line is the reflection of that?
Yes, it is. So we've been, for a couple of years now, like, it started two years ago that we were talking about this as being sort of a three-year plan with a lowercase p. Like, this is where we're kind of heading. What we're looking to do is, knowing that the number of staff we have for the size of our enrollment, it's been misaligned for a long time, because enrollment dropped so significantly and we didn't reduce staff commensurate with that at all. So the idea is like, okay, let's try and reduce the size of our staff, get it much more aligned to a more efficient operation in a realistic way, I will also add. And so the, the idea was to reduce by about $2.5 million a year for three years. So we're in the first year of that, where it actually was part of the budget, and that's where you get this figure where we're at right now. So we have eliminated formerly closed 18 positions. There are a few more that I know of that are sort of in the works. So we're making progress on it, but it's not as far along as I would like to say. We're going to probably have to do a little bit more assertive work with the executive team to really get them more engaged in identifying, okay, this is how I'm going to be able to not fill this position. And again, we're only looking at reducing these positions through attrition. This isn't with people in them. The idea is when someone retires, how do you fold that work into what currently exists? How do you reorganize and make it so that you don't need to fill a position? That's what, and we've had some really good, successful examples of that. It's trying, and that takes time, right? It's a slow process, but it is a better way to go through it than laying people off and doing really ugly stuff, which, again, there are times when you have to do that. We would prefer to avoid that and like, going through positions that are vacant is a much better way, in my opinion. Okay, back to the thing. So, in this particular case, so what we're looking at is all the different things I talked about, what we're looking at, realistic projections for revenue increases, and then the expenses that we talked about. Again, this is a little bit overstated because I think I can get that contractual obligations down a little bit. The strategies, though, looking at the positions is $2.5 million, that's again, second year of that three-year lowercase p plan. So continuing to do what we're doing this year, it's going to get increasingly difficult to do this. It's like, some of the easy, low-hanging fruit has happened. So now it's like, okay, we're going to have to be really serious and diligent about this to make that happen. And then I mentioned using about $1 million out of that health reserve, which I think is a healthy, it's not an overly aggressive thing to do at this point. Nevertheless, if you add up and you see what's down at the bottom, that's still, compared to where we're at currently, it's a negative impact on the budget. To give, the, to address that through additional personnel reductions, to give you an idea, the $2.5 million is about 25, 30 positions, give or take. I mean, it depends on which positions, obviously, but 25 to 30 positions, that if we were to try and cover that by doing more position elimination, you're talking about on top of that 25 to 30, it'd be another 15 to 20. So it's starting to be more and more difficult to do that. So that is one strategy. Then you get into, sorry, let's just leave it there, what we talked about on the revenue side earlier on, the other ways to handle, to avoid going negative versus where the current year is, incrementally getting worse, if you will. The options are, we have capacity to increase property taxes and then tuition. We don't want to do tuition. It's sort of late in the game to do it. It's not that you can't, but it's late in the game. Property taxes, and we provided some of that information, where we are comparatively, with the uncertainty, might be time to think about it, even though we're trying to build a budget without property tax increases. So without property tax increases, without tuition increases, you're looking at, okay, again, and I said that I think I can get a half a million out of this with the contractual obligation. So it's really more like a, say, a net negative one. Still would be more positions to eliminate and it's going to be more difficult to do it. That's a, that's essentially where we're at. And that's what we want the board to sort of give us, the sense, their feedback, your feedback on where you're thinking, what your thoughts are about that. And I think that does it for my monologuing part, which I thought was going to have more questions in the middle, but anyway. Now it's time for questions, comments, direction, feedback.
Any comments, questions?
Dr. Beeb, I am having a problem with the math on the reducing positions that aren't filled. If we're not paying salary, compensation, all of that kind of stuff to those positions, we did a third of them already, we're going to do a third of them this year, we're going to do a third of them next year. I don't get the math behind that. Why, if we're not paying those monies, how is that lessening our budget?
It's a really good question. You're right, short-term, you're totally right. If you have a position that is not filled and you eliminate it, you don't save anything. What you're actually doing, though, long-term, is you're preventing that position from ever being filled. That's how you save the money. And you can be skeptical about that. We cut more than $10 million out of the budget that way when we went through the expenditure limitation reductions. So we did it through reducing attrition, and the number of positions over time went down. Because what happens is there becomes an expectation, no, you don't get to fill. It, position becomes vacant, it goes away. We, and then you have the total savings. So it takes a little bit of time, it's not as obvious as, but, I mean, because that's a really observant point. If the position is vacant today and you close it tomorrow, it doesn't save the college any money. That's true. But what often would happen is three months later, you would be filling that position. Now you have the costs that's coming that you avoid. You avoid the costs that would happen in the future.
So it'd be interesting to know what those positions are, where they are in the college. And it would also be, I'm not skeptical, by the way, it just, mathematically, it's not making sense to me. Could be the lead hour, but, but I don't, I don't see how that's a savings if we're not spending that money anyway, even in the future, when we hire in the future, we, I mean, we might hire in the future. I, I'm concerned, though, about positions where we have faculty leave, and then I think you mentioned something about, you know, we won't hire for those positions. I'm assuming that we're really careful, Dr. Nasi, in making sure that we don't impact programs.
Yeah, at this point, when I'm talking about this attrition strategy, it is exclusive of faculty. Like, these are staff positions that we're talking about exclusively. A staff and administrator, a lot of the original, a lot of the initial cuts were administrator positions.
Yeah. When we were talking about the attrition strategy, early, early this year, actually, last year, yeah, no faculty lines would be closed, nor police. Those were the two things that we felt we didn't want to touch, were faculty and police. These were staff, vacant staff positions. And right now, but still, staff have a programmatic impact, right? Of course. So right now, right, I've challenged the team, the leaders on those teams, to say, what can you do differently? How can you think about things differently? But of course, it will, it takes some... But of course, it will, it takes some rethinking on how you approach things, even, you know, when you look at the thermometer, well, we are at 1.5 or something like that. Yeah, a little, a little bit more, but we still have a ways to go. But, yeah, there's always going to be some, right? It's, it's a position there, someone vacates it, and now you're not going to fill it. There's going to be some impact on processes, for sure.
Last question. How many of these positions have been vacant for more than, let's say, three or four years that still haven't been cut?
Of these 18?
And the, and the next third?
I'll talk about the 18, and then I'll get into the other one. Of the 18, a large majority were filled fairly recently. They're not positions that have been vacant for a long time. Like, so for example, a couple of the big ones where we had an executive vice chancellor for campuses, the David Dorey position. We had the chief of staff position. Those were two very high-paid ones that had people in them very recently, last year. So as an example, those two were recently filled. There are other positions that haven't been filled in some time, where that is like the easiest thing to cut, except for in some cases, there are things that the college has been planning to do and needs to do for a long time. So you can't just say, all of them, they're past a certain age or gone, but those are the ones that are more obvious. I can tell you, but of these 18, and I'm just going on my memory of which, what they were, a lot of them were filled relatively recently, and when a person left, it gave the ability to do reorganizations that then freed up the position. So I, the majority of these 18 are that. There are a number of other vacant positions that have been unfilled for some period of time. Those are, again, easy, but those don't really save us money either. That, that gets totally to your point. A position that hasn't been filled for four years or three years or something like that, is just kind of hanging out there. It isn't a real expense that the college has had. But what I'm saying is what really does matter, and it's, you have to like sort of have a little bit of faith with this, but it's, but we have evidence of how it played out with, again, the expenditure limitation reductions, is that when you have positions that can be filled, eventually they will be filled and there will be costs associated with them. So if they're gone, it cuts out that ability to do that, and that saves money over time.
Comments, feedback for Dr. Bee?
How many positions are funded, full-time positions are funded through federal grants or federal monies?
I may have to get back to you on a certain answer to that. I'm going to guess it's like 100-ish. It's in that neighborhood.
What's the total number of staff positions we have right now?
Positions, regular positions, 1,400-ish with the grant, including the grant ones. So when we're budgeting, we're often thinking about the 12, 1,300, and then add the 100 on top of that.
I, you were asking for sort of feedback on, on where to go, and I'm certainly only speaking for myself. I wouldn't, I'm not dictating anything to my colleagues up here, but, you know, I've been worried since the beginning about the structural imbalance that we have, especially with staff-side expenses. And so I can really understand the strategy, and I was behind it. In my mind, I would still like to see the viability for finding that additional 1.4 million on the expense side. And what would that really look like? I mean, I know you're talking about 15 to 20 positions, but compared to the 1,400 number that, and knowing that we have never done the reduction we needed to do, it seems to me at a high level that that's possible to find in there, even if it causes a little consternation and forces some creative thinking about how we're going to get things done. I'm not saying that's absolutely what we have to do, but I at least would, I would be interested in seeing a scenario where there's more in that strategy section on that slide about what strategies we can come up with to close the gap. I mean, I'm not completely ruling out entertaining for, again, for myself personally, a revenue adjustment, but I, at least my initial position is to sort of say, I think this may be showing us that this is motivation for time to start making some of those changes, or at least challenge the college leadership team and everyone that they would be involved in that kind of a discussion to try to figure out how we might be able to do that and see what that would look like.
So I think that probably based, with that sort of feedback, so what I'm hearing is continue to build the budget with no property tax increase, look on what impacts, what that would look like. We probably need to get together again in a study session-type format in April-ish, so that that would give us the time to do what we would need to do if the decision was to do a tax increase.
Okay, yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I do have a question for you. I don't know if you have the data available right now. I know for other meetings I've watched, not for PCC, but when they've discussed increasing the property tax, sometimes they've had, and I know that valuations are really complicated, but they've had some data, like if, if the house is valued at $150,000, this is what it would actually cost the taxpayer. If we could have some information about that, yeah, I'm looking at that one right now.
Right, which doesn't answer your question.
Yeah.
But I will help you.
Awesome. Like, how much would it cost a homeowner with the 2% and with the 3%?
Typically, you're talking about, and it depends on the home, right? But the current structure is you have to say per $100,000, but let's just go with a more typical house value of like $200,000. Current property tax for that house is like in the $200 range. 2% increase is like $4. So it's a pretty moderate increase to an individual house, say, $4 or $5 per, for the year. That it's because Pima County is so large and there's so many properties that when you increase by 2%, it actually is meaningful to the college. It doesn't have an obvious impact on the individual residential property. And that, which is also why those who have paid attention over time, that the number of people who comment about the potential property tax increase is very small, because when you actually break it down, it's not that big of an impact. Not that we don't need to also be serious about that, right? And have a good justification for why we would be increasing the property tax. I think that's important as well.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments for Dr. Bee? No? All right.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to discussion item 2.2, Higher Learning Commission Feedback and Corrective Action Framework Planning. I'm just going to say Dr. Duran Serta et al., because there's a whole bunch of people on this list, so we'll go through where it's appropriate.
It's a team effort. Okay. Well, good evening, Board Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Bernard Morales, members of the board, Chancellor Nasi, General Counsel, colleagues and guests. It's my pleasure here, along with my team. We will be presenting on the HLC Feedback and Corrective Action Planning Framework that is focusing on the additional locations. So we'll each come up and share a little bit. So what we're going to be looking at as our agenda is starting off with the good things, the positive things that we've heard back from the HLC. And then we'll go into the areas, the two areas that were met with concerns. Some definitions, specifically talking about additional locations, dual enrollment, some challenges, and then our next steps to correct those challenges. So here we go with the strengths. So according to the HLC, they felt that we have a very positive learning, inclusive learning environment, and that's part of criterion one, and that we include perspectives of different stakeholder groups. For criterion two, they said that the college has a commitment to integrity, transparency, and accountability. In criterion three, they said that we provide an overall quality education and having the resources to do so for, to continue in the future in helping our faculty, staff, and students. Criterion four, they talked about faculty administration and staff and how everyone really shows a passion, because they saw that during the criterion forums. They witnessed all the people that were there that showed passion and commitment, and the students who were also there. And they agreed to that, too. And then continuing with criterion five, they said that we leverage resources, we align our processes in general, and that we have data-driven strategies. They also gave a lot of kudos to the board that really demonstrated a strong commitment to the success of Pima and the college and the broader community. And then, of course, providing steadfast support for the chancellor's leadership. We were also grateful that we met all the HLC federal compliance requirements. And then some specific things that happened during the visit. So they requested two different demos, one on Pima Online and the second one on CQI, which is curriculum quality improvement. They wanted to see how Pima Online works. They, they got a demo and they loved it. They really want to take those ideas back to their own colleges. Also, they were impressed with the student learning outcomes and program review reports with CQI, and were very pleased. They were also very impressed by the number of people that participated in all the different forums, the criterion sessions. And we put envious in quotes because the community members told the HLC peer reviewers, excuse me, the peer reviewers told us that they were envious about how supportive community members were about everything that we do at the college. They'd never seen anything like it. It was all very positive. And of course, they were very pleased with our hospitality, that our logistics team displayed, as well as tour guides that showed them the best of Tucson. They loved all the solados and were taking pictures of everything. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Wendy Weeks, and she will introduce herself. Each person will be introducing themselves and their titles. Wendy?
Thank you, Provost. Good evening, Chair Taylor, Chancellor Nasi, board. Nice to meet you all. My name's Wendy Weeks. I'm the accreditation liaison officer. We have two areas that were met with concern, and the first one they call criterion 3A. Essentially, they want to make sure we are offering our curriculum, our programs, anything we do with quality wherever we offer it, additional locations, dual enrollment high schools, and how we offer it, how in the classroom, online, hybrid. So that is an area that was met with concern. You can read the bullet points, and you're going to hear more about those from the people who are following me. I want to go ahead and focus on bullet number two. We need to create a faculty orientation. So they did bring up that a lot of systems we use here at the college are not being used out by our additional locations. So one of them is our desire to learn, our learning management system, our syllabus system, and also putting students in programs of study, and what we call my degree plan is not occurring at the additional locations. And the other area met with concern is criterion 4B. This has to do with assessment of student learning, that we are taking a look at how we're doing with our students across our regular campuses, we call those branch campuses, but also at our additional locations, and make sure those students are meeting their success rates at the same rate as our branch campuses, that we compare those, that we look at them, and we do quality improvement on those areas. So with that, I'm going to pass, those are the areas where we have to file a monitoring report. The very bottom bullet is a monitoring report is due January 29th of 2027. With that, I'm going to pass it on to Melissa Stoddart here. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Stoddart. I am the Director of Additional Location Compliance at Pima. Welcome, Chair Taylor, Chancellor Nasi, and governing board members. So I'd like to get into some of the definitions that we're going to go a little bit more into from this HLC report. So the first is a teaching site. So that is anywhere that Pima is running courses at. That can be credit courses, non-credit, adult basic education, anywhere we're teaching at. Dual enrollment provides high school students with an opportunity to earn college credit while still in high school without having to leave their high school setting. Students have to still meet college readiness, course placement prerequisites, and complete a PCC admission application. Most of these courses are being taught by a high school instructor who is required to meet the Pima faculty qualification and HLC standards, and they're often placed on a $0 teaching contract. Additionally, dual enrollment courses can be face-to-face, online, or hybrid. Now, an additional location, that is where we're offering credit courses and we're exceeding more than 50% of a degree, certificate, or other recognized educational credential. So an additional location can be a facility that the institution does not own. It can be an office building, a high school, or a campus on another institution. This is defined by HLC and is based upon a federal definition. We currently have 28 approved additional locations registered with HLC, and 15 of those are dual enrollment high school locations. Some of the others outside of the high schools include three of our prison locations, the Santa Cruz Center, the Aviation Center, our 29th Street Center, the Maintenance and Security Center for Transportation, and then we have several fire and law enforcement training centers. And then after we apply with HLC for an additional location, we have to report that location to the Department of Education as well. So before ever exceeding 50% at a teaching site, we should be requesting approval before we offer more than half a program. Now, Wendy covered some of the areas of concern that were listed by HLC in the recent monitoring report. However, we wanted to highlight several of the accomplishments that they also documented from the HLC's prior visit that they held in 2023, when we received a report in the summer. So they did detail in this recent report that we have not been adding new additional locations for the last two years, that we hired an additional location coordinator, which is my current position, that we have closed down 10 additional locations over the last year and a half. That has included some that were at the request of the academic division, some were at the request of a community partner, and the majority were ones that Pima had in inactive status, where we were no longer running programs and no one had been visiting at those sites. So with confirmation from the deans, we were able to close them down since we no longer had students or programs at those sites. Some of the other areas documented were the creation of the administrative procedure, 3.25.8, for additional locations. That all came to the governing board in June of '24. A lot of the requirements in that AP came from Provost Duran Serta's high-lever plan that we had actually provided to the HLC back in 2023. In that AP, HLC identified that we now require academic deans and department heads to complete at least one annual visit at our additional locations to make sure we have academic oversight. They listed that we have now developed an asset transfer process for surplusing equipment potentially to our additional locations, and we've developed standard operating procedures. So we've created three standard operating procedures for the 28 additional locations. We couldn't create one for all 28 because they're very different. So we've broken it down into dual enrollment standard operating procedure, a Pima-staffed additional location, so that's like our Aviation Center, our 29th Street, where we have full-time employees there. And then we have a business and community partner standard operating procedure. So those are more of our law enforcement and fire enforcement training programs. Now, we wanted to cover a few recent developments that have happened that were not documented in that HLC report. We have applied for a new Federal Bureau of Prison location. That was actually one that we had internally identified that we were out of compliance on and had been operating for over 20 years without approval. So we filed with that with HLC. Additionally, the institution has applied for a prison education program. That is to transition our Second Chance Pell Grant Experimental Site to be a full-fledged program. That was a requirement from the Department of Education as they are phasing out the experimental site. So to be able to continue serving those students, we had to apply for this with HLC and will be applying with the Department of Ed. Additionally, we will Additionally, we will be having an HLC site visit already. We're looking at early May of '25 for our prison site at the Arizona State Prison Complex. And then now I will hand it over to our next speaker, Emily Helverson-Otts.
Good evening, Board and Chancellor. I am Emily Helverson-Otts. I am the Acting Vice Provost of Academic Access. I apologize for my voice. I recently went to Alaska and the cold air irritated my bronchial airways. So hopefully, so anyways, apologies about that. I was appointed into my position in September, mid-September of last year by our new chancellor, Jeff Nasse, and to oversee dual enrollment. And since that time, I created a plan which involved listening sessions with dual enrollment department heads, deans, as well as the dual enrollment team. That was approximately 10 different listening sessions that resulted in some coding and information and themes that led to some of the training that we did, but also to helping support the bridging of academic areas to dual enrollment, because that's been one of our challenges, is just the siloing that's been happening between academics and dual enrollment. We developed some professional development training based on what we had already done in the Sciences Division. My home position is the Dean of Sciences. And so last fall, we did, shared out with our dual enrollment faculty, the form that we had created, that is just a standard onboarding curriculum conversation, everything from how to submit your grades, how to do your syllabi, what are the expectations in terms of content, and things like textbooks as well. The next training involved facilities oversight. So for some course types, like sciences or art or automotive, where you have required facilities, you have to go in and physically pull open the drawers and look at what do they have to ensure that we are mirroring the academic content and so that it is a college-equivalent course. The third training involved the faculty qualification process for dual enrollment. And that has continued to evolve in terms of directions, building in strategy into that process as well. And so that was our third training. Because of the gap that we had, excuse me, between the academic areas and the dual enrollment in terms of providing this oversight, and some areas were farther ahead in that process than other areas, I made the decision to place a pause on dual enrollment courses for the upcoming academic year. And I should say, pause on new or growth. And that was to allow for areas to catch up in their oversight, their capacity, doing dual enrollment faculty observations, and just really building in the oversight that I talked about when we did the professional development training. Since that time, we've also conducted 15 site visits to all of the additional locations that are dual enrollment. Melissa mentioned that we've got 28 total. 15 of those are dual enrollment locations. And so we have gone to all of those site visits and met with the high school leadership. And we are actually also now in the process of meeting with the remaining school districts and teaching sites. And there's a total of 60 different schools that dual enrollment serves throughout Pima County. During those conversations, we are talking about expectations like submitting their syllabi through our simple syllabus system, D2L. Wendy had mentioned that, and the expectation to get all of our dual enrollment faculty into D2L. We've been discussing communication between our two entities and partnerships. We've been discussing the necessity to get your grades submitted in time, as well as CLO assessment. And Wendy also mentioned the CLOs. During those site visits, we've also been talking about the future of dual enrollment and strategic pathways. And we also have discussed that the prior governing board was looking at potentially charging for dual enrollment. So we've been very candid and transparent about that. And so those have been some of the conversations and expectations we've been discussing. So at those additional site, additional locations visits, we received some excellent feedback. They appreciate our candor, our transparency, our discussions around providing strategic pathways for these students to be able to transition on in their educational journey. And they also gave us some constructive feedback as well. Some of the themes that came up at these site visits was a Pima presence. They really want more faculty, deans, staff to come and just be part of their community. They want us to be engaged in their Pima days or their days where they bring parents onto the campuses, the high school campuses. They want us there advising students. Several of them talked about having a space, a physical space, that we could come and spend time at. Staffing came up. Staffing is a nationwide issue and challenge for specifically dual enrollment, but I'll also talk about it at our other additional locations. So one of the most significant challenges to our dual enrollment sites is finding qualified instructors that meet our minimum criteria for certification. And so that often is the driving factor at some of these locations on what courses they can offer. And again, we're trying to veer into more strategic pathways instead of just what can you offer based on who you have. But that limitation really also dictates what, it determines what they can offer, but it also means there's a lot they can't offer in terms of those strategic pathways and thinking about what they do, would like to offer at the campuses. As Melissa mentioned, those instructors are also zero-dollar contract. And there have been conversations about what does that mean for accountability when we are providing them a contract without actually being the supervisor in quotes. But I also mentioned additional locations regarding staffing is also a challenge. Finding faculty who will drive down to Santa Cruz or even going through the process of getting onto the Davis-Monthan Air Force Base and getting the background check and being willing to go onto those locations can be a challenge for us, too. As I've mentioned a few times, we discuss pathways and academic advising opportunities, and all of the dual enrollment locations want to be able to provide more and more dual enrollment for their students. They're very interested in being able to provide courses that lead up to an associate so that they can help really lift up their students on their educational journey. And there are more of them that want to provide lots of other types of courses as well. And then dual enrollment. So this leads from that last bullet point. Many of the additional locations spoke about how they had, within their district, two or three locations that were an additional location, but they had one or two that were not. And they want to know, how quickly can they become an additional location? Because they felt there was inequity issues by having some of their schools being able to provide more than 50% of a certificate or a program where others could not. They also talked about how they worked, it provided them the opportunities to earn certain grades for high schools and the opportunities it was giving them in terms of serving their students. And so strong desire to add more additional locations. In fact, every single location wanted to probably add two to three, two to three more additional locations for us.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Yeah, of course.
The, you were talking about the staffing challenges because of the requirements for that position. Could you just elaborate that in a little bit, especially for the new board members? Because I know we talked about this in previous years, but how those requirements are different from like your standard high school teacher? And then who sets those requirements?
Great question. So for academic transfer, that is, the baseline is a master's degree in that field that you were teaching in, or a master's degree plus 18 graduate credits in that field. That is dictated by the faculty in terms of what types of courses they will accept for a transfer program. CTE also allows that, but they also provide some additional areas regarding looking at their background in terms of content expertise, and that has also expanded to the academic areas as well. But it is all faculty-driven. So does that answer your question?
I think it does. He was asking for us so that we were the new board members. May I ask a question? You mentioned during your presentation, the feedback that you received from the locations about the possible changes coming with dual enrollment. What has been the general thoughts about those upcoming changes, possible upcoming changes?
Yeah, I was going to get that, to that later, but I will address that now. So some of the feedback was that it was very receptive. Some areas said, oh yes, we need to have some skin in the game. Other areas felt that it could be an inequitable situation for them. And they were worried about being able to financially serve their community with the potential of having charges for dual enrollment. And so there was mixed feedback depending upon the individual school, district. And they, many of them expressed a desire to be a part of that process, provide feedback, and were hoping that there would be benchmarking as well.
Was that feedback obtained in a survey, conversational, anecdotal? Do we have data to follow that?
Right now, it was completely conversational at all 15 additional locations that we had. And so at those conversations we went through, here's our new AP that Melissa mentioned, the SOP. I talked about the pause for dual enrollment and why. And then we moved into, here's future, future conversations that's happening here at Pima. Any other questions before I continue? All right. So you're starting to hear some of the challenges that we've had, we have internally. And the president, or the chancellor's cabinet, excuse me, came up with three themes that really encompass what we need to do for dual enrollment and our additional locations, which is communication, accountability, and consistency. And one of the challenges that we currently have is that our additional locations, so again, we're talking dual enrollment locations like Davis-Monthan, our prisons, all report up through three different ELT members. And so that's a difference in consistency potentially.
Is ELT executive leadership team?
Yes, it is. My apologies. I usually am pretty good about that. So yes, the executive leadership team. There's many moving parts. And so that has been one of the challenges for dual enrollment, is that they are so interconnected throughout the college and trying to bridge silos at times, but also working with so many different areas, because this includes student services, it includes the registrar, it includes academics, it includes Melissa's area. And so you start to think of all the number of individuals that either an additional location or dual enrollment touches and integrates. So that in itself is very complex and is one of our challenges in terms of supporting all of these sites, especially when the Higher Learning Commission expects us to provide what is called wraparound services to all of these locations. And those wraparound services are everything from the tutoring to completing your FAFSA to your application to Pima or just advising. And so it becomes very complex. We've had, of course, constant changes at Pima, as well as our high schools, there are turnover. And so navigating who to go to at times can be a challenge. You've heard this already, although I'm going to say it explicitly, resources. David B. spoke to the financial resources. We've got staffing challenges. And when we start to think about the dual enrollment department heads and their requirements in terms of faculty observations and conversations, we start thinking about bandwidth and their time, as well as dean's times. And the new AP Melissa spoke to requires all of us to go to these sites and engage these locations as well. Therefore, we really need a strategic plan on our number of additional locations. What is our actual capacity? How can we serve them? Where are we headed, right? As I mentioned, all these locations want to add more and more additional locations. We're already at 28. So what is it that Pima can actually serve? We also need to have a safety plan. We have several, we have some prisons that we also serve. And so right now, at this point, we do not have an actual safety plan that has been developed, and that is important in case there is a riot or a lockdown. And who's going to communicate to the families, for instance, that we've got a Pima employee there? And then we also, our dual enrollment students are not in a program of study. That's a conversation I've been, several of us have been engaging in. But we have found through the last year or so that we've had some students who actually earned a degree or certificate, but because they were in a program of study, they didn't actually earn it. So we're working on how do we address that? And I'm now going to turn it over to Vanessa.
Good evening, Board, Chair Taylor, Madam Vice Chair, Bernard Morales, members of the Board and Chancellor. It's a pleasure for me to be here with you today to talk about the corrective action plan, to really address a lot of the areas of concern that were brought up by Wendy and Melissa and Emily. So what we have here is we have challenges, but we also have opportunities to improve our student success outcomes and our student learning and really advance what we do for the community. One of the aspects that were, that was really highlighted within the report is that we have plenty of data. We are, in fact, we're data-rich. What we need to do is really come up with a plan to analyze the data and also be able to utilize that data to create a meaningful impact when it comes to student learning. We also need to ensure that we have consistency within our faculty participation across various sites. So including our dual enrollment, additional locations here on our main campuses as well, and how do we bridge those gaps to get faculty together? And really looking at our systems and our structures and our processes to improve faculty participation across the board. So even within our dual enrollment, our additional locations in our main campuses, we have silos. So that definitely impacts the student learning and the quality of education that we provide. So we need to ensure that we bridge those gaps with our systems and our structures. One of the other aspects that we have really started to look at is our onboarding process for all faculty. So our adjunct faculty, our full-time faculty, but also our dual enrollment faculty. How do we ensure that we have systems and processes that are documented so that they can access how to improve student learning, that they're utilizing our D2L system? And also that we're able to ensure that we are working together to improve student learning assessment across the board? We need to expand and provide specific onboarding training for all department heads as well and create some type of consistency with the framework that we have. We are really focusing in on our communication, our accountability and consistency measures, which is part of the gap that we have here at the institution. The other aspect that we really need to incorporate into this corrective action plan is how are we going is how are we going to be strategic about the dual enrollment and additional locations? And that really needs to be driven by Pima's strategic plan for the institution. And also, it needs to be integrated within the strategic enrollment management plan. We do not have a shortage of high schools and additional teaching sites that want to be an additional location. But how are we going to be strategic with it as it requires additional resources? And it also requires a lot of academic oversight. And we want to uphold our commitment to providing high-quality education, no matter where that is occurring. We will bring forward a detailed corrective action plan to the governing board in April of 2025. We are already starting to look at our current processes to see how we can immediately impact and improve our systems, such as incorporating it into our program reviews to ensure that faculty and deans are looking at the student learning data across the board. We're working really closely with STAR and our assessment team to be able to collect the data, but also being able to share that data widely to improve student learning assessment. Many additional locations are being requested. Melissa's already working on a priority rubric with a diverse stakeholder group to see how we can prioritize which additional locations, which high schools will become additional locations, if that's the route that we take, to ensure that we are being equitable as we analyze and take that strategic approach. Lastly, Melissa Stoddard started in late spring of 2023, always with the intent of expanding that additional location office, because we do have some, quite a bit of work to be done within that area. So we are actively looking at how we can expand that office to ensure that we are, maintain our compliance. And with that, I'm going to open it up for questions, but I'm also going to invite the team over.
Sure. Chancellor, was anything you wanted to add before we got into the questions?
Just thank you for the team for putting together the presentation and all the hard work. And just for the Board, yeah, I think the team spoke to this. It's a lot of processes, right? I think it's just aligning some of our processes and making sure, I think, at the very beginning of the presentation, right? If we're offering a class at, you know, whatever high school, that it's at the same quality, right? We're giving college credit. We just need to ensure that we're, we're making sure that the quality is consistent around it. And I think some of that, some of this is, we're a large college, and we serve, as you can see, we're across the county and all kinds of different spaces. And so that's where some of that consistency and accountability has broken down. We did meet this criteria importantly, is the big ally. But these were some legitimate concerns. And that's one of the healthy parts of accreditation review, is always kind of learning about yourself, where you can get better. So I'm glad to see that the team has really taken this on. And that's the idea, is that we do get better. So, thanks.
Yeah, and I'll turn it over for questions. But I just want to say too, before we begin, because I'm sure a lot of the questions are focused on the areas where we have for improvement, which is where we have work to do, so I understand why. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that if you look at the report overall, there was a tremendous amount of success in there. And so that's something certainly to be celebrated for the work of all of you and all of your colleagues across the college for, well, the last 10 years since our last accreditation review. Because, you know, our relationship with the HLC has been various degrees of strained over the years. And so to come through as successful as this one is, I mean, we have some things that we need to work on, and they're important things. I don't mean to diminish that. But it is an institution of this size, when you do kind of an audit, like, there's always something where we can, we can improve. So I just wanted to commend all of you for your work on this, and thank you and the whole institution, because it was, overall, incredibly good news that came out of that report. And so, anyway, any questions, comments? Board Member Randall?
Ms. Stoddard, I have a question for you. And it's, you might not have an answer for it. When you were discussing the, setting up the, another additional location, and that it would have to go through Department of Education, what happens if there's no Department of Education? Or if it's vastly dismantled? Do we know what would happen then?
Well, so the new additional locations, or removing one, they go through the same process that for adding a new program at the institution and making sure that it's Title IV eligible for federal financial aid. So as Dr. B. mentioned, they, they don't expect federal financial aid to go anywhere. That seemed to be, you know, one of the things that wouldn't be impacted. So the process for adding new locations should still be the same then for the institution, because it's the same as our programs and our third-party accreditors too, that we have to document and send to them.
Thank you very much.
I have a quick question as well. And I'm not sure if this is a question for Dr. B. or for you all, but, and I have about 1,000 other questions, but I haven't formulated them just yet. So I'm looking forward to the continued conversation. But we talked earlier about the attrition and the positions. Are any of the positions that we are talking about related to this program or this area? And you can answer that later. It doesn't have to be now.
Not specifically.
Okay. And the other question that I had is related to the expansion of the additional locations. Are those based on requests from the locations themselves? Or are we basing this on industry-driven data?
So from the initial discussions that we've had, those are coming from our community partners. So as we've been at existing additional locations with high school principals, several assistant superintendents are at those representing their district. And they're asking about their district and some of the other schools within that. So part of the rubric that Dr. Ariano mentioned, that would be looking at those things. We would really like to include that in whatever that matrix is that the institution adopts. But at this time, the initial requests have just come from the locations themselves and wanting expansion and wanting wraparound services and wanting support from Pima.
Thank you.
Other questions? Board Member Brielle?
Yeah, I have a few. And if you don't know the answers, you can just let me know, let all of us know. The first one is, what is the benefit of having 29th Street Aviation? And I think there was a third as additional sites and not what we call the East Campus and the other, the other three campuses?
I'll start. I'll start, and I'm going to pass it. So one of the benefits right now is we'd have to apply for beyond an additional location is then called a branch campus. So technically, here at Pima, all of our campuses, West Campus, Northwest, those are all branch campuses. Pima in particular has an interesting setup where our main campus is District Office. So our District Office, we don't have students here, we don't have programs here. So all of those are branch campuses. So the next step up would be claiming them as a branch campus. And when you have a branch campus, you have to have all additional wraparound services at the campus. They come out, they visit it, they have to approve it. It's a pretty long process, and it's very costly. So that would be part one of it. Anybody else want to chime in on anything else?
My next question is, I taught dual enrollment at Santa Rita, so it was close enough I could walk if I had enough time. And to me, it seemed back in that day that there were a lot of procedural things that were just, just a little irritating, you know? The textbooks weren't there when I started teaching, they weren't there the second week. I had students that weren't enrolled in the Pima classes. And I can, you know, you know, you all know what they are, right? To me, it seems like if there was just a checklist that this has to be done first and needs to be completed, if it was like really procedural, because there were a lot of people. Teri Hawkins was doing so much for me, and I think she was like a program manager or something like that. Kathy Kent was doing stuff, getting students enrolled, on and on and on. But if there was like a checklist procedure?
I have so much to say to you right now. So yes, that is one of the many aspects that I've been working on with the dual enrollment team is a checklist of expectations and requirements. That's why that first conversation with a department head and the dual enrollment faculty, whether they're a brand-new dual enrollment faculty or teaching a new course, the curriculum conversation is so critical because that encompasses a lot of that checklist. But the other piece is why we put a pause on growth for new dual enrollment courses as well, is so that we could actually align our timelines to make more sense with all those steps that we need to do. Because candidly, we often were getting course requests in March for new courses for fall. And that, that is very challenging when you have to now have a curriculum conversation, go to the site, make sure that the site is equivalent in terms of content, also the certification of the faculty. It's a very crunched timeline. And it wasn't allowing the high schools to be able to budget for textbooks. It wasn't allowing them the timeline to purchase and prepare. And so what we're doing is shifting all those timelines as well so that course request for the next year will have to happen October of this upcoming fall. That allows us to get that checklist, those conversations, all of that established. And the other thing I'm working on is to have the students enroll themselves in the courses. So then we don't have that other component that you mentioned, like the students aren't actually listed in the class. Because right now, it's a manual process for the dual enrollment team to register all of those students. That is a huge amount of time and a very, very inefficient for them. What? Oh, yes. And right now, there's around 6,000 students, head count, so.
Can I have a follow-up question with that? You mentioned the proposed plan with making it the students' responsibility. Have you all looked at the additional cost from a system standpoint of that, what are required?
So if I understand your question correctly, the cost around having the students actually enroll themselves will decrease the internal costs in one aspect because we now are taking that team and focusing their efficiency, they're becoming more efficient in the work that they're doing. And so they can now spend their time on things, various aspects of the dual enrollment process, connecting with the high schools, whatever it is, bridging between all of those areas that I talked about. So I haven't done it in terms of an actual cost analysis, but just thinking about time and their resources in that capacity.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I guess what I was thinking more, when you talked about equality or the equitable approach and accessibility, when I think of somebody that's in the prison system, they might not have access to a computer system, whereas in a high school student might, or somebody at the aviation center. I don't know, would we be taking on that additional cost to make sure that they have those, that technology and the equipment necessary for them to be able to do that?
Yeah. So I will turn over at least the prison part to Melissa. And there, most of the schools are already equipped to be able to provide the resources they need to have the students self-register. But it also means that the team, instead of registering themselves, will be going to the campuses, engaging the faculty and the dual enrollment students, and helping them register themselves. But the other aspect to that is they are then self-identifying as a college student, right? Because that was one of the gaps that happened that the HLC identified back in March of 2023, was that many of the students didn't realize they were Pima students. And so just the simple act of, hey, let's get you logged in, let's help you learn how to register. That's one more messaging for them to recognize that they are a Pima student.
Yeah, absolutely.
So there's the benefits for that.
Absolutely. I really do appreciate that. And I think it does prepare them for what's coming in the next two years.
And to answer your question regarding the prison education programs, so for two of the, the two federal prisons, we're teaching face-to-face, in person, and it's paper to pen. So everything is manual in there. Their admission application is still by paper. The FAFSA in the state prison that we're running, that we're doing, the Experimental Pell Grant, they have to do a paper application. So for both the federal prisons, it's paper. In the Arizona State Prison Complex that we're transitioning to this prison education program, those students actually receive a tablet. It's about the size of a phone, and it's provided from the prison. But we do have a different learning management system that's used because they can't have normal internet access. And the students actually pay like a rental-type fee for that system through their Pell Grant.
Thank you.
More questions?
I have two questions. I think one is for Emily. And the question was, do we know what our cost is per course? And I know it depends on a lot of factors, but, and I don't need a dollar amount now, but just in listening to your presentation and looking at the slides earlier, I think for the community at large, most people think, well, the cost for Pima is the instructor, right? Because they're going to onsite, and they're not paying maintenance facility, et cetera, et cetera. But just listening to you talk about the wraparound services and all the requirements, it's, you know, balloons into a lot. And so when I'm listening to, of course, everybody wants another onsite, right? And it's free for the students. But what is the cost to the college, especially in light of our earlier conversation?
I cannot give you an exact amount right now. As part of that rubric that we started drafting, we were doing back-of-the-envelope sketches, rough estimates. And we stopped pretty early on, and we determined that it was easily 50K per location. And that was just thinking about my salary, right? My salary is in there. Okay, I wanted to make sure. Did we get that far? The dual enrollment team, and we didn't even start to completely integrate in the salary of the deans, the department heads, the Melissa's position. And so we thought, this is, if we can just say, we know at least it's this much. And so we stopped at that value. And I was going to say something else, which now has escaped me, so.
Thank you. And the second question is for Ms. Ariano. You mentioned that you're going to be bringing a corrective action plan to the Board in April. What about the strategic plan? Is there a deadline for that? Or is that more of a conversation that is just happening now, and there's no set time for that to come to the Board?
We are already having conversations about the strategic plan. Part of it is the cost, but also the academic oversight. And also, we're looking at community need, and we're incorporating that as a part of the rubric. So that will be a part of the strategic plan. We do not have a set deadline for that yet, because it is complex. And it does impact a lot of our students, our community, our high schools. So we want to ensure that we take the appropriate time to get their input and feedback into this process as well.
Yeah, that will be folded into the larger college strategic planning process, which you know is underway.
So I remembered what I was going to add. In a recent conversation with some of the high schools, they were surprised to hear that we were considering charging tuition when they thought we received funding as an in-state institution, right? They said, well, you get the footsie. And I said, yes, we get the footsie, but we no longer receive tuition, or, excuse me, in-state funding. Our entire payments, our funding structure, of course, is property taxes and tuition. And they were blown away. And so that was an eye-opening moment for me to recognize that our high school partners, while they see, oh, it's free for us, you guys are benefiting from it from a financial component, right? And needing to educate them on that as well.
I still have a few more.
I just wanted to add to that, that that's something that we all have to work on in getting that message out so that the community understands how this works.
So my next sort of thought and question is, it would seem like a lot of these responsibilities need to be in the faculty handbook. I don't even know if we have something like that anymore. Because these are responsibilities that if someone drops the ball, they, you know, it's dropped. And so since it's going to be in-
And so since it's going to be in those, like those work positions, you know, for the faculty, the department head, all of that, I know some of it is compensated and some of them is not, which is a horrible thing, the is-not part. And then lastly, it'll have to be, there needs to be some sort of wraparound 360-degree evaluation because if, you know, if people think the job's being done, but it's not, that is as much of a problem as not having the checklist and the procedure. So that's one of three.
So in regards to your first portion of your question, the expectations were written out and laid out in the faculty leadership manual handbook. And then I came into the position, and so I need to go back and look at what is detailed in there and make sure that it's in alignment with the work that I've been doing with the dual enrollment team. But it was in there. There is compensation for those dual enrollment department heads to provide some of that oversight. There's just been at times a gap in the fact that previously they weren't expected to do some of that, and some of that is educating them that this is part of your expectations in alignment with your compensation. The second part of your question, which now, what was that again? Evaluation. That is an excellent question, something that we haven't implemented or integrated in yet. It does go back to the conversations though that we are having at the additional locations and with the teaching sites. And the communication piece, it's not a formal evaluation, but we have told the teaching sites and additional locations that if you're not hearing from us, you're not seeing anyone coming, please let us know as well. And so it is a way of at least starting that wraparound evaluation, but it's not formalized yet. So excellent suggestion.
Okay. And then my last question comment is, I went to many of the monthly, they weren't happy hours, they were HLC forums, town halls. And, you know, I just want to say thank you to Melissa, to Ari, to Dr. Ariano and Wendy because I was very, very concerned about the federal compliance issue. Every time I would go to one of those, I would hear you all report on these same missing pieces of the information. And so thank you for getting all of that done, and that's my gratitude. And then my question is, are we also writing some sort of checklist so we know that we don't want to get behind like this again in the future? And is there a checklist for, not necessarily you all to be, you know, making sure other people are submitting this information, but that they know it's also part of their job responsibility?
I'll start. Yes, we have. We have done an after-action review with everybody who was involved. We have long lists of things we saw that went well, didn't go well. We also had another one recently, probably two weeks ago. How are we going to maintain this moving forward? So when I picked it up a couple of years ago, the last review we had was from 2019, and it was like, where are the documents? Where are this? Who has them? Who owns them now? Because there were so many reorgs. So we are processing all of that, and I think we also have a meeting tomorrow. Is that right, Counselor Sylvan? I think so. Yeah, I think we have another meeting tomorrow on how are we going to keep these documents coming in? Who's going to be responsible? And how are we going to kind of fold those things into various job descriptions throughout the college? Because one thing we need is, we need everybody in this college is involved. I think they just didn't really understand how until we're knocking on their door going, where is this? So it's not 100% yet, but yes, we do have the backbone. We know we're heading there, and what that exactly is going to look like, we're working on. And since I have a microphone, I'm going to say, I just want to put out there, the money pieces. Anytime we file for an additional location, we pay money. We have to file money for an additional location. On top of that, we are billed yearly to maintain that additional location. And on top of that, about every four years, we will receive a visit from the HLC on additional locations where they randomly, we don't get to pick, they randomly tell us who they're going to visit. And I can tell you that price tag about every four years is going to be in the ballpark, you know, until prices go up because we pay for the flights of the people who come in is approximately 15,000. Thanks.
I have one last question. I know we're running out of time. I'm just curious, and again, if you want to follow up later, that's fine. Based on what everything I've heard, actually, I want to reiterate what everybody's saying. Thank you so much for all the time and effort and research that you've all have done for this program that is so incredibly impactful and beneficial to our, to our community. Do we have data or do we have examples of best practices across the state or across the nation that you all have come across with colleges similar to ours in size and structure?
Melissa, you want to start? Sure. Yes, we have done some benchmarking with some other institutions. We have talked to Rio Salado at AmeriCopa for dual enrollment, for instance. They told us they don't let them hit 50% of a program. They keep it below that so they don't have to do those full wraparound services, and they're charging. We've benchmarked with a school in Colorado. They have several additional locations. Their organizational structure is slightly different than ours. They have someone from, I believe it's two kind of associate dean positions at their branch campuses that go and support their additional locations. They also said they have quite a bit of extra funding because they cover kind of the Vale and Aspen in Colorado areas through property tax. And then we are recently going to start looking to see if we can benchmark with Ivy Tech because they have over 450 high school partners and tons of additional locations. So we're going to look to set up a meeting with them too, to see how they're kind of monitoring and doing oversight.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up on, Emily, you had mentioned about, you know, if you encountered that program of study issue and if you waved a magic wand and we solved that, that they would have potentially been eligible for some kind of degree or certificate. So imagining that scenario, we would essentially be conferring degrees or certificates having, in which the students have not paid anything in order to do that. Just making sure I understood that that was what you, okay.
Yes, that is an accurate statement and assessment of what I said.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any other questions or comments, either for the HLC group here or for Dr. B and budget? If not, we can adjourn. Going once, going twice. All right. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.